Good afternoon, everyone. I am Mayor Robinson and I am calling this meeting to order. It is 5:45 and we are going to proceed with our public hearing on the City of Lake City budget. Public comment, period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person and no personal or verbal contact, excuse me, verbal attacks will be entertained. The mayor and council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect mayor or council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment, period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please make sure to sign in and leave your name and address for the record with the city clerk to council. Go ahead, William.
Mayor Council, for permission, tonight we would like to present for public hearing the proposed budget for the period July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. As shown on the screen, general fund, personnel and fringe benefits expenses, $7,622 for the general fund. Operating expenses, $3,098. For total expenses in the general fund of $10,160,623. That's 62.39% of the total budget. The water fund, with salary and fringe benefits and expenses of $569,217. Operating expenses, $1,665,783. For a total water budget of $2,235, that's 13.72% of the total budget. The sewer fund, salary and fringe benefits, $1,276,200. Operating expenses, $2,614,545. A total expenses of $3,890,745, that's 23.89% of the budget. Total budget for the City of Lake City for a year ending June 30th, 2024, $16,286,368. Any questions? On the second slide, and it's small, but you have a copy in front of you, this shows the headcount by department. For a total of 118 full-time employees, and as a full-time mayor here, we have 119. Fifteen part-time staff members. And there is a breakout by department. I'll give you a moment to review, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them.
Is there any way that you can blow that up on the screen? Zoom in.
Can you zoom, zoom in? Yes, plus, there you go. It's still kind of hard to read. I'll read out what we have. In the administration department, seven full-time employees, zero part-time. Finance and human resources, six full-time employees, zero part-time. And the public information and media office, two full-time, zero part-time. And the police department, we're projecting 36 full-time employees, zero part-time. In the judicial department, two full-time employees, two part-time. In the fire department, 14 full-time employees, no part-time. In the utility service department, nine employees, two part-time. In the solid waste department, seven employees, zero part-time. In the code enforcement, three full-time employees, zero part-time. In the recreation department, five full-time, two part-time. In the senior department, one full-time, no part-time. In the water sewer administration, which is the billing department, we have three full-time and zero part-time. In the billing customer service area, we have five full-time, zero part-time. In the line maintenance, we have 11 full-time, one part-time. In the wastewater treatment plant, six full-time, two part-time. In inflow and infiltration, one full-time employee. That's a total of 118 staff members, nine part-time. One mayor, six council members. Any questions? Mayor Council, for your consideration, the proposed millage for next year, for the general fund, 178.34 mills. And for the debt, 27.46, for a total of 205.8. Last year's millage was 214.34, that's a reduction in the millage and the taxes of So we will be operating next year with a reduced tax base. Any questions? Can you zoom, blow this one up as well, Savon? All right, back, back a little bit. All right, now, this is the capital request for June, July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. Originally, we had almost $3 million with the request. If we cut it down to 1.373. In the general fund, it's 178,000. The water department, 44,000. And the sewer, total of 350,000. So we have 1.373 in capital request, of which this would be financed with a lease purchase. Any questions? That covers the budget as a whole. Now, we also are increasing, proposing this budget is including a utility rate increase. Savon, if you could flip to that slide, please. F5, please. Effective July 1st, 2023, we are proposing a rate increase in water sewer and garbage. All right, so, in the garbage, for, excuse me, in the garbage, we're going up 75 cents, $20. And the second cart, we go up 50 cents. In the water base rate, $12.49, it was $9.99, that's a 250 increase. In the commercial inside, that's $15.99 from $9.99, that's a $6 increase because commercial inside, we feel should be paying more than residential. Can you reduce that, Savon? For some reason, it's not showing on this screen like it did the others. There we go, go back up. Go back up a little bit more. Sewer base, there we go. Commercial end, 2710, 2459, what it was, a $2.50 increase. Going down a little bit, Savon?
Residential end.
All right, hold on, where are we at?
That was residential end. I think it's cutting off the bottom.
It is, this, this screen is not working right.
Go.
Previous slide, Savannah.
Go to slide number two, Savon, and we'll just read it that way. So, we have, in the garbage, getting $20, we have a current rate of 1925, that's a 75 cent increase. In the second cart, we're going to $12 from 1150, that's a 50 cent increase. The residence inside is from 12, is going up to 1249 from $9.99, that's a $2.50 increase. And the commercial inside, we're going $15.99 from $9.99, it's a $6 increase. All right, sewer and the residential end, from 2710 to 24, from the 2459, a $2.51, it's $2.51 cent increase. Scroll down just a little bit, Savon? All right, a little bit more, I don't know why it's messing up on the screen.
It just won't show.
Yeah. All right, keep going, a little bit more. See the 251, and then the commercial end at 3099 from 2459, that's a 640 increase. Scroll down to the next slide, please, Savon? All right, this is the, oh, you've gone too far. Residential outside, we're going from 20 to 42399 from 2063, a 336 increase. Commercial outside on the water is 2399, 26, 2063, a 336 increase. On the sewer residential outside, we're going to 3899 from 3580, a $3.19 increase. On the commercial out, 3899 from 3580, a $3.19 increase. Can you scroll down? Now, the, one of the main reasons we're going up on these rates are for the fact, and this is a good example, the city was awarded a grant for $8.4 million. Our match on that grant is $1.4 million. We know we don't have $1.4 million to match that, so we went to the IRA and based on our norm for our salary base against our community, we're below the norm, so we were eligible for a forgivable loan of $1 million. So that means the city still has to come up with $480,000 for that match. So, without doing rate increases, we would not be able to afford these types of grant opportunities. So in reality, we're going to get $9 million for $480,000. So, one of the projects we'll be doing is the sewer rehab, which is a sewer pump station at Davis Street and Cole Road. The total cost of that is $3,450,000. The city's match is $456,000. The grant amount, 2,2588. Next slide, please, Savon? The next item that was on this grant application of $8,400,000 was the Martha Law Estate Sewer Rehabilitation. That total project was estimated at $3,750,000. We have grants in the amount of $2,613,000. City shares, 461. Next slide, Savon? The other part of that grant of $8,400,000 was the wastewater treatment plant headworks, that is, bar screens, mechanical bar screens, grid removal chamber and so forth to keep the wastewater treatment plant operating correctly. $3,765. The grant amount was $3,200,000. The match was $564,000. Next slide? So the city's total match was $1,482,000. The grant amount was $8,400,000. That's a total project of $9,885,000. With the IRA forgivable loan of $1 million, that leaves the city owing $482,750 to match to be able to receive this $8,400 grant. So that's my presentation for the budget. Mayor and council.
We're also giving the public time to come up and if you have any questions or concerns about what was presented here tonight on, on the City of Lake City budget. Remember, comments are limited to two minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Margaret Jones, that's the 7:30 team, right in front of our Lake City South Carolina.
Please don't give your answers, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Margaret Jones. But, um, what I was concerned about as he was talking about the budget and increase in the water and the sewer, when we received the, um, the postcard about the water and the sewer being increased, and the postcard was so small that you couldn't hardly see the writing, for you to say something that I gave to us about increase in the water and sewer. And then we're supposed to have a meeting about, made everybody know what the meeting was about, raise, you know, raising water and sewer. Because most of our people in Lake City, especially all the people on a fixed income. So if you're on a fixed income, you're talking about increase it one year, next year it'll be this, next year you increase it within three years. That's a lot for people that are on a fixed income if you keep increasing the water and the sewer. And one thing we cannot do without is water. And y'all know that. So when you increase the water bill, people got to want to, okay, I got a payment water bill, you gotta skip getting my medicine, or skip doing something to get me something to eat, you know, to pay your water and sewer. Because y'all know it's high. When you look at the average person bill, it is up there. So to increase it with no jobs in our community, no affordable houses, and you're doing that to the citizen. Y'all got to look back and see what the citizen in Lake City can really afford before we start increasing this, increasing that.
Okay. The speaker that just sat down touched on a lot of things I wanted to say, but one thing I would say, I understand that we have to generate cash to get a lot of things repaired. But like the previous speakers stated, I think what we're doing is using the water bill a little too much to generate those, that revenue. And maybe, maybe there's a solution that we can look at. But I, I think a lot, a lot of this comes in at your third bullet on your, on your postcard. I hope that we're not doing this because we want to still maintain salaries of everyone that works for the city and, and benefits that they're receiving. But I think that the solution may be, because if we keep increasing this bill, the average cost of a water bill for the residents of Lake City is going to be from $125 to $150 a month. That's a lot. But what you can do, you can allow them more gallons before you send them, once they reach their peak and you start charging them per thousand gallons like it should be based on usage, we can give them a bigger allowance of the gallons that they're using. And that'll keep them from going over as much and getting these hundred dollars water bill. Now, if they're misusing water and, and spilling out a lot of water, yes, I understand that we got to pay for the gallons that's being used. But I, I do hope that you guys look at the allowances that you're given for the money that you're putting in as a fixed payment monthly, and that you will allot the residents more water before they go over, so they won't be penalized and get a hundred dollar water bill consistent every month. Or else, when you finish with all your, your 22% raise up to five years, we're going to end up at a hundred fifty dollars a month. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. Before I take, take the podium, is, um, is this just for concerns or is just any, any public comment?
This, this public comment is for what was just presented. Now, we're going to go into our regular city council meeting as soon as we get done with this.
Okay.
Okay. So this public comment here now is only for the budget.
Good evening. I too have to agree with Roger and Margaret, is that I remember when my water bill was like $45 a month, and now I'm paying $65 a month. And now I'm hearing that we're going to go up more. And Margaret, I want to say that everybody's on a fixed income. Because if you work a 40-hour job, you know what you're going to get every week or every two weeks. And so, and everybody in here, I think, is living on the budget. I know that I am. So when we're using, and I'm like Roger saying, you know, it seems like we're using the, the water and the sewage for everything, and so, and I agree with them, we need to take into consideration that we're in Lake City and maybe the, the surrounding area, maybe I need to look at the surrounding areas and see what they're paying for water bill, um, with the, the population that we have, you know, maybe I should take, you know, look into that before, you know, I come before you guys. But I do, will hope that you were taking consideration because, um, as we look at the economy, it's not getting better. It's getting worse. And I know we have to pay for our utility, I understand that. We have to pay for utilities. But if water bill go up, we paying a hundred and fifty dollars a month, and we a lot of people without water. Because they are going now for other resources, other people, some people now are going to other resources to get the water bill paid now. And that's going to be exhausted after a while, so what are we going to do then?
Good afternoon. I don't intend to beat a dead horse to death. I just want you guys to understand that I concur with the previous speakers.
Do we have anyone else for our public comment?
I would like to say that I don't have to come all the way up there, I can speak live. So I live in the rural area.
If you can, Mr. Brown, I'm sorry. Because we do have one of this viewing Facebook.
Okay. Yeah, I live in the rural area, and my bill is high enough as it is. So, would like for y'all to take that in consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember, do y'all have any comments? Thank you all. I am going to, we're not going to actually.
Okay, I think it's time to move. To think of how many expressed your concerns about the water sewer, I think maybe y'all there have feelings about it.
But for some reason, you're not coming forward. So I guess you're here for that, and it would be, it's too late now, but, um, by your presence, it's evident that you're quite concerned about the water and sewer. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Crosby. Any other council members? I need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All the favor. We're going to take just five minutes before we go into our regular council meeting. At 6:15, we're going to go ahead and continue with our regular city council meeting tonight. Before we begin, I would like to ask all of the men in here tonight, if you have a hat, could you please remove your hat in the building, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, I am Mayor Robinson, and I am calling this meeting to order. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the public is encouraged to wear face masks and social distancing measures have been put in place. Seating is limited. Reminder, before the meeting begins, we ask that you silence your cell phones. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating the civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of our city of Lake City, South Carolina. We will now have the invocation led by Councilwoman Scott and our pledge, pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Crosby.
How great thou art. You made the moon, the sun to shine. We thank you because you made us. We thank you, dear God, for allowing us to be here another month to take care of the business of the City of Lake City. We thank you for all the citizens that came out this evening to share their concern and the love for Lake City. We pray to heaven and father, as we begin this meeting, that it would be productive, that would be good for all of us here in the city. Blessed in your name, amen.
Amen. I declare allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you, Councilwoman Scott. Thank you, Councilwoman Crosby. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the city council members?
Mayor, you're Robinson.
Present.
Mayor, you're Lieutenant and COO Secretary.
Present.
Councilmember, you're Ms. Scott.
Present. Present.
Councilmember Veronica Cooper?
Present.
Councilmember William Askin?
Present.
Councilmember Sandra Corbin Crosby?
Present.
Councilmember Jason Brown?
Present.
Mayor Robinson, I find your uniform.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Second. It has been properly moved and seconded. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes, approval of the April 11, 2023, mayor and council meeting. Move to approve minutes from April 11, 2023, mayor and council meeting. Second. It has been properly moved and seconded. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Next on our agenda, we have presentations, and we have one presentations tonight. And the presentation will be by Ms. Paula Morris. I think Ms. Mary Spates is not here, but she will be accompanied by Reverend Hooker. Presentation on vaping slash medical information. We have five minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. Mayor and city council persons. We are here today, Ms. Mayor had a family emergency, and she couldn't be here. So we are here today to talk about the vape business that we have here in Lake City and truly what we want. We want them, the business to be closed. That's what we want. And the reason why we want them to be closed, because if you remember in 2021, I came to the chief and them about the vape store beside KJ's where they were selling to minors, and they still are selling to minors. Ms. Mayor couldn't be here, but next month she'll be here to give evidence of her son purchasing. He's a teenager purchasing vape. And that's one of the reasons. The other reason is that when I came to the hearing for them to close down that vape business, they didn't close it down. The business was just closed until somebody else transitioned in to open it back up again. And I know it got to be a family member or whatever. And when I came then, then the detective that went in there and got materials out of there and everything that he said, he took to the lab. And from the analogy of the lab, all of it has some content of some drug in it. But yet, it's still opened back up. Another thing, because it's causing problems in our schools, and briefly, because I won't, I won't pass the hooker to, because he's done some research too. But Ms. Mary, as she sent, she did email me this, that the risk of vaping is lung scarring, organ damage, asthma, and other lung complication. And it has different things that's in it, like vegetable glycerin, which is a sweetener, a sweetener. But studies have shown that over time, it can lead to inflammation of the lung and chronic disease. But this is the main thing I want to say tonight. When she did the research on the one that her son had, her son had a vape that was called Lost Mary Vapes. And this vape contained 5,000 puff, 14 puff equal to one cigarette, equals to 50 cigarettes. And then she said that when you, the number that she gave that is 50 milligrams in that one vape, and saying that it equals to two meals. In other words, if you multiply 50 milligrams times two meals, you could get 100 milligrams. The nicotine that's in the vape that our young people are smoking, I'm still advocating for the young people, old people make their own decision, is not good for our young people. At the school, they have a problem at the school retrieving vapes. You know, when the children should be, the teachers should be helping the children with their academic skills. So we're here tonight, and we're gonna keep coming back. And if you notice, all the people that own these vape stores, they're not American people, and I'm not prejudiced, because everybody know me. But where are their children? Are their children smoking vape? And the vape is made in China. Are their children doing vape? Where are their children? I don't see them in our schools. I don't see them in our community. But these people are selling to our young people. Even Mary even called the sheriff department on one about selling to her son. So I'm gonna hush and knock, and we're coming back next month and the next month until we get some results.
Reverend Hooker, in a minute and a half, just briefly, the American Baptist Coalition, General Commission on United Methodist Men, Health and Ministries, Lama mentioned, Seventh Day Adventists, the United Church of Christ, and the General Board of Church and Society, just to name a few, have all come out against vaping and have all come out against vaping directed towards children and youth. I'm all for industry, I'm all for businesses in this community, but we do not need businesses that lead to a lifelong addiction to some form of nicotine, to some form of vaping activity. These industries by nature have attracted themselves to the attention of young people and young children. Their colors, their products, their marketing, all targets teen and youth. And, you know, the saying is, oh, it's just air vapor. It's not air vapor. A lot of the vaping products include nicotine, your friend, flavored substances such as diocin, vitally, which is organic combat, cancer-causing chemicals, and heavy metals since nickel, tin, and lead are in this vape. So when you see these young people vaping all in the vape, walking through it, they're not just making themselves sick, they're making us sick. So, and I heard it, but I'm gonna just finish one more thing. It's also vaping is not just e-cigarettes, it's also heated tobacco products. How long have we fought in this community of Lake City to rid the cancer-causing causes of tobacco products? Now you're gonna heat tobacco products and sell them to the children and young people to cause more cancer and cause more health concerns? So it's not so much that we're against the shop. We're against causing health concerns for our children and our community, and we ask the council to act. Sorry for my impoliteness. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Madam City Council and Mr. City Councilman.
Thank you all so much. Thank you. Thank you for that presentation, Pastor Paula Morris and Reverend Hooker. Next, we'll go to public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person, and no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please make sure to sign in and leave your name and address on the record with the city clerk to council. So when you come forth, you can speak your name, but don't speak your address, just document it on the paper, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Wanda Anderson, and let me just go ahead and write. Okay, I would like to, first of all, I would like to commend the city for a job well done for the cleanup that you all did last month, the citywide cleanup. I would like to commend you for that, and I would especially like to commend Councilwoman Cassandra Crosby. And the reason why I'm giving her this special, commending her especially is because I know there was a time when, in my neighborhood, I've been asking for some, for someone to go in my neighborhood and clean up the trash. I don't know, I don't, I would like to think it's not my own neighbors that would do it, but whoever would drive on that particular street and just throw all kinds of big bags of garbage and food and just all kinds of trash down that, on Laurel Avenue, right down that stretch where the woods is at. And I've been asking for someone to go in there, from, you know, the city, you know, when they have the cleanups. I have been asking for someone, you know, when they do the cleanups every year, that they would go down that street and clean, you know, and just pick up that paper, you know, since they're cleaning up the city, don't forget about the neighborhoods, you know, clean up the neighborhoods too. And I would, you know, I would get promises that they would do it, but it wouldn't be done. So this year, when I found out that y'all were having the cleanup, I reached out to Councilwoman Crosby, and she came over there, because I told her, I said, I want you to see what I'm talking about. And she came over there, and she saw all the trash, she took her pictures of it, I don't know what she did with pictures, but she did take her pictures of it. And she said, I'll see to it that when we come down Blandon Street, that Saturday, I think it was, that we would make sure we come down this street and get the trash. And I forgot about it until like, maybe Tuesday of the next week. And then it dawned on me, and I looked, and all of that trash and junk and all of that stuff was gone, you know, and I was just so proud of her because this is the type of people that we, when we elect you all, this is what we're looking for. We electing you all to not just represent the city, but the people of the city. And if I'm going to elect someone, it's gonna be someone out of all of y'all. I mean, you know, I want to elect people that I know is gonna represent me, that's gonna work for the city and who's gonna represent us. And that's all I have to say. But I, as a whole, I do commend the city for the cleanup. But I just really wanted to put that out there and just tell her and everybody else that's working to help the people of Lake City to keep, keep on doing what you're doing. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well.
Just a quick reminder, just respectfully, just let's do it to two minutes, okay?
Thank you. I'll try to keep it under two minutes.
All right.
Well, first of all, congratulations to all the new city council members. Okay? Secondly, thank you, Ms. Mashaw. At least you've started on somehow 90 days. Demand, and we appreciate that. And we have a lot more to go. I'm not here trying to cause problem. I'm here trying to make things better for everybody. I live here. So let's work together. Make things transparent for everyone. Just don't tell people one thing out of your mouth, and don't have nothing to back it up.
Any more comments tonight? If not, we're gonna move on to our legislative.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for your consideration.
Ordinance number 2023.005, second and final reading. An ordinance known, an ordinance known as 60 Acres on West Cole Road, Lake City, South Carolina Tax Map Number 0016931287, currently zoned R3, and requesting to be rezoned to OIA Office Institutional Apartments and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve ordinance 2023.005 for second and final reading.
Motion to approve.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Any questions, council?
Wim, can you, for the sake of those who were not in the last council meeting, explain exactly what's going to be taking place out there? I think it's supposed to be the music consortium?
That is correct. Chief Driggers, you want to speak on that?
It's just gonna be a possible potential music consortium, but it's still in the design of playing the basses at this particular time. But this makes it where it's zoned to be able to be developed.
Are these from out of state? Are the owners out from out of state?
Yes, ma'am, they are.
I wonder, okay, I know it's in the proposal stage for zoning, but is it for every genre of music? Or, because I know there's supposed to be some apartments out there?
It would be, it would be a whole consortium, but it's, that would be the owners that could tell more about that. It would be, in our understanding, just for all phases of music. So it would be classical, any type of music, whatsoever, anybody's interested.
Okay, you know about how many students?
Any other questions, council? None? Okay. All in favor, show of hands. Do we need to read?
Go ahead, do it again.
Okay, all in favor, show of hands. Any opposes? Okay.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council for your consideration. Ordinance number 2023.006, second and final reading. The owners of Florence County Tax Map Number 0019631139, currently owned by Nelson Willoughby, 701 U.S. Highway 52. Lake City is currently zoned R1, requesting to be rezoned to OIA Office Institutional Apartments and all matters related thereto.
I need a motion to approve ordinance 2023.006 for second and final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second. Been properly moved and seconded. Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Any opposed? Okay, we're gonna do that again, please. All in favor, show of hands. Raise them up high. Any opposed? Raise them up high. Thank you.
Mayor and Council for your consideration, ordinance number 2023.009, first reading, authorizing and directing the Lake City, of City of Lake City, to enter into an intergovernmental agreement relating to the South Carolina Local Revenue Services to participate in one or more local revenue service programs, to execute and deliver one or more participant program supplements and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve ordinance 2023.009 for first reading.
Motion to approve.
Second. It has been properly moved and seconded. Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Mayor and Council for your consideration, ordinance number 2023.010, first reading, an ordinance of the City of Lake City, South Carolina, to levy taxes and establish a municipal budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024, and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve ordinance 2023.10 for first reading.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Mayor and Council for your consideration, resolution number 2023.020, first reading. The City of Lake City is seeking approval to accept the resignation of Ms. Teresa Pressley from the Planning Commission, all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2023.020, final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second. It has been properly moved and seconded. Any questions, council?
Is there a reason she resigned?
She just didn't want to be on the board anymore, correct?
If.
Was she from Lake City?
Yes.
Any other questions? All in favor, show of hands.
Mayor and Council for your consideration, resolution number 2023.021, first reading, final reading, excuse me, 2023.021, final reading. A resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, for the approval of and acceptance of $8,402,750,000 from the South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority, SCIIP, and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2023.021 for final reading. Moved to approve. Has been proper, has been properly moved as second. Any questions? If no questions, all in favor, show of hands.
Mayor and Council for your consideration. Resolution number 2023.022. A resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina seeking approval to appoint Ms. Jane Plyer, Player to the Planning Commission Board for the remaining of the term of Ms. Teresa Presley. The term will expire 2/1/2026 and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2023.022.
Motion to approve.
It has been properly moved as second. Any questions? If none?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Was she interviewed for this? Yes. By who?
This was the same person that was interviewed, the same young man Hubert McFadden was interviewed, when we had the four applicants, three show for interviews, one didn't.
But that's when, this, this is where we run into, as was said at the last meeting, if council is to approve these people, or vote for these people, then I think it's only fair that we get a chance to interview and meet them. So I'd like to see in the future, when we, when people are being appointed, that council members are notified, to give them the opportunity to see if they want to interview them instead of interviews. I respectfully ask that. Thank you.
And I think when we, we spoke about that and mentioned that, we stated any interviews that was done prior that time, which Ms. Jane Players was during the same time as Mr. Hubert McFadden, that we would discuss a little bit more and go forth, hopefully go forth with the council members doing, in the interviews. So we will talk about that further. Thank you.
See, I was not even aware that she was interviewed during that time. That's the thing. So, as I said, you know, to not reiterate what I was saying, but I think council members need to be included. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns, council members? All in favor, show of hands.
Mayor and Council, our monthly financial report, page 98 in your package. The revenues for the general fund are in at $9,861,280. That's 109% of the budget, so we're running above the budget at this moment. And the expenses for general fund are $9,41,000. That's 99.98% of the budget. That's a surplus of $820,000. For the water fund, we brought in $1,887,826, 78% of the budget. We had expenditures of $1,342,986, 75% of the budget. We have a surplus of $44,840. In the sewer fund, we have a revenues of $3,537, 115% of the budget, and the expenses of $4,494,537, 146% of the budget. We overspent $956,777. And the reason why that is, we've had some highly costly repairs in the sewer area. And in the stormwater, we have collected $128,000. We've spent 58 of that. We have $71,000 to earmark for other projects going forward. As I will say, we have three stormwater projects that will be coming up in the very near future. Any questions on that, please?
Let me ask you, I, I think I've seen another new vehicle, a big black one, like the one you drive and Joe drive. Is there three of them now?
We, we, you'll be seeing four of them coming in, but it's part of the police package. We, were approved two years, a year, 18 months ago, that they're now finally coming in. Mayor and Council for your consideration, I present to you bills 1 through 12 for your consideration for payment.
Need a motion to approve bills items 1 through 12.
Page 99 of your package.
Move to approve bill 1 through 12.
Second. It has been properly moved as second. Any questions? If no questions, all in favor, show of hands. All in favor? One second. One second. Okay. Okay, if no questions, all in favor, show of hands for bills items 1 through 12.
Mayor and Council, thank you for your time. That's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you, William, for your reports. We will move along. We do not have an executive session for this evening. So next, and to wrap up our meeting for tonight, we will go to council members and mayor's reports. We will start with Askins, please.
Nothing to report.
Always good to see you proud. It shows that you're interested in what you're doing here, a decision that being made with the cleanup. I did came out and helped with that, but I was not aware, I remember reporting about in my area, about that area, the cleanup. I took the initiative myself to clean up on Borregard Street. Of course, you know, we get the number one traffic, from 52 to Act Line, and it's coming on Borregard Street. And there's a building on Borregard Street that is very noticeable that do need code enforcement to, it's several, it's two on Borregard Street. That does need code enforcement to put some pressure to those people and let them know that we're concerned about our community. And when you come into town, you go down Borregard, you come up Mo Street off 52, you go down Borregard Street, and those are the houses you're gonna see first. And, and we treat them with no respect. People throw everything down and they don't care. And I watch it all the time. And, you know, if you tell me there's an area that in my area, and I know about it, I would definitely try to see that get cleaned up. So thank you all for coming again.
Thank you all for coming out and voicing your concerns. I hope you all went out for art fields and enjoyed all the art. Also, the food truck rodeo was this past weekend. I was not in attendance, but I did see pictures. It looked like it was a great turnout. Also, don't forget about Juneteenth events that is approaching next month. Make sure you go check out the city website page and Facebook for the lineup for that. Happy Mother's Day to all the great mothers out there, especially mine, and I hope to see you guys next month.
Thank you all for coming, and thank you, Ms. Anderson, for the recognition. And would like to concede more participation and attendance at these meetings, if at all possible. Thank you and happy Mother's Day also.
Hello, everyone. Thanks again for coming out and voicing your opinion on what's going on in the community. Your concerns are greatly appreciated. Please keep them coming because that's the only way that we are gonna be able to serve you, is to know what is actually going on and, you know, actually to get your input. I hope that everyone continues to stay vigilant in the areas. If you see any crime, please report it. And again, please just stay safe and stay vigilant and have a happy Mother's Day.
Thank everyone for coming out. Pleasure seeing everyone. Like we say, when you're out in the community, stay vigilant. If anything's going on, let us know. That's what y'all elected us for. We here to serve y'all. And let's see you next council meeting.
Thank you all, council members, for your reports on tonight. Thanks to all who have participated in this meeting tonight. I encourage everyone to come and to continue to share your concerns and issues. Encourage others to come as well. Thanks to all the city staff members who worked behind the scenes and in front to make sure that Art Fields was a success for 11 days last month. We had a lot of people from all across the country and outside of the country to visit and enjoy our town, as well as our food truck rodeo. Thank you this past Saturday. Announcements that I have on, on May 10th tomorrow, we will be closed tomorrow, and that is a State Memorial Day. So our offices will be closed tomorrow. May 13th, we will start our games around the city. You will see more of that in our announcements. And also, May 19th, oh, please be advised, since we're closed tomorrow, please be advised of any change in our trash pickup schedule, also for Memorial Day. I know some people say they didn't know or their trash went out there, they didn't come and pick it up. I've got a lot of calls about that last couple of months, but it's because we have a revised trash pickup, and that was placed in your water bill. May 29th is Memorial Day. May 19th, we will be closing at 12 o'clock due to our employee appreciation day. We must do that day. We must have that day to appreciate our employees on how much they do on a daily basis. Our next, my next roundtable, community conversation, will be June 3rd, and that will be from 10:30 to 12:00 here in the council chambers. So please, once again, community, come out, share your concerns and your issues. Again, talk to your local officials, your city staff, and with any concerns that you may have as a citizen. Just want to note, since the 21st is on a Sunday this month, please note that you have until Closed Business Day on the 22nd to pay your water bill on time, since the 21st falls on a Sunday this month. Let's remember to encourage everyone the Civility Pledge, that civility, respect, and solutions for a better tomorrow and future for our great city of Lake City. I thank you all for coming today with your, with the presentation about the vape. I definitely hear you. I've, I've known and heard about some of the acts that have been taken in the schools, and, and hopefully we'll get some type of solution to that. And thank you again for bringing your presentation. Also, the words that I heard tonight, two words that I heard tonight, and they're very powerful words, and I thank you for it, and those two words are "thank you." Ms. Anderson, you said "thank you." Mr. Tim, you said "thank you." And now I'm saying, and we've all said "thank you." And that's what we need to do more of, thanking each other. Those are two powerful words, and we can make our city such a great city if we continue to thank each other for what we all do in our own lanes every day. Thank you all. I need a motion to adjourn. Has been properly moved as second. Thank you.